First one, second one we don't know it, it's next year.
Wow.
Yeah. Then I'll be an empty nester and have to move into senior housing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe you'll have that done by then.
Ah, I don't think so. Right, Mark?
What?
That's when all the fun and games stop.
And the clock is...
So all the bills come in, what's wrong with that clock? We can put on our planning board budget to get a clock that's accurate.
We just adjusted that two months ago.
I know, it doesn't like to work.
Just two months ago.
Doesn't.
Somebody what?
Roger's on time.
Is that looking at?
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, Mark, did you find some in time?
They actually got an earlier flight, so they were home by midnight.
Being over here, I can hide in the corner.
Right.
Being over here, I can kind of...
Yep, that's why it's kind of nice. It's a little hair to look at.
You're gonna like her though.
Well, they...
Yeah, no, but she'll be okay.
I thought it was going to...
No.
I just run the meeting, I don't say anything. I just tell people that one day when they can talk. And when they can't talk.
No, it's right in Chicago. Right in Chicago, eastern of that.
Thank you. Can we read that Noah Carey notice again on the second one?
No, no, no.
Give you something to read.
No, I keep my mouth shut now.
Okay.
Actually, I think I have your favorite one here.
Oh, yes. Good evening, everybody, let's start our meeting. I'd like to remind everyone to sign in please on the clipboard over there so we know who's here. Thank you. Our first order of business is a continuation of our public hearing for 1800th Century Drive. And for everyone here, can someone please state the correct pronunciation of the corporation?
Inugi.
Inugi, yes, a hard G. We had about three or four different opinions last week and we didn't get it right. Amugi. Right. So...
My stuff back away.
We have the date of July 10th, this is from VHB.
The next package is a response from Whitman and Bingham, so maybe we can jump to that and see if there's any issues that they've...
Yeah, we'll try that. Okay.
Do you guys have a lot of copies?
Yes, of your response today? Yes, thank you.
Good evening.
And what is the application on this? This is just a site plan review?
And you're spanning the building.
Spanning the building.
Right, but it's not a special permit?
It's not.
Because I wasn't at the last one and you guys, we only have three that were at both, so that's good, as long as there's no special permit, it's good.
Now, it's sort of the situation where the original site plan review was a phased approach.
Yep.
And they're kind of into their second phase with a little bit...
Sounds good.
You want to hear that brief?
No, no, I'm very familiar, I was on the original.
Ah. I think they had three buildings planned and now they're putting the second one in.
Good.
They're just moving the parking lot over to the... Putting the building on the park where the parking lot is and then making a new parking lot to the west.
You're gonna explain why that whole development up there sort of has group stormwater drainage?
The town built it under a... I think it was either a state or a federal bond or grant and included, it was like a regular subdivision. It was for, it was an industrial subdivision road.
Yep.
So the roadway was built with an assumed percentage of impervious area on each of the lots, like you know, like they normally do with all the other subdivision approvals.
Right.
So it was all built with, to the stormwater standard at the time, back in whatever it was, 2000...
Right.
Actually, that was 1992, so it's been awhile. Yeah, I was on the con con then, I wasn't on the planning board, so I don't know all the planning board details, but it was more a con con issue thing.
Okay.
But it did meet all the standards at the time and I think the only thing that was outstanding was the stormwater quality issues.
But that's what the...
But that's what I think they're talking about doing, making it all match.
Okay.
So I'm gonna proceed, I know Mr. Biggad wasn't here last time, I can go through it quickly again or...
No, I'm just, I'm familiar with it. Somewhat familiar.
Can I ask a very quick question before then? So I did look at the place and so the lawn area, you will be using only half of the lawn area, right? Am I correct?
Yes, exactly. So what currently exists today...
Yeah.
Is, so here's the roadway.
Yeah, that's a roadway, it's close inside, yep, yep.
All exists, all exists.
Yes.
This roadway exists, this light brown exists.
Yeah.
This is what's being proposed here for the building nestled in that lawn area between this existing driveway and the building.
So the other part, it's wooded area now, right?
Yes, yep, so this is, there's no development up here.
Oh, okay, that's also belongs to this place, right?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So I thought, you know, you are going to divide the lawn area into two.
Yeah, so this is how it was approved back in 2005.
I get, I get, yes, 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 yes.
So it's, we're not as far out as this plan shows.
Uh-huh.
And we're not doing this third building phase, we'll kind of nestle in here, taking a little bit of that...
So the second wherever you are going to build is the part driveway goes through, current driveway, that current driveway is here.
Yep, so you would, you would come in and when you would take a right...
Yep.
You can now also take a left to go to the new parking lot, if that makes sense. So this would be all new up in here.
So you'll be making a parking lot too?
Yes, exactly, yeah.
In addition, you'll be making a parking lot...
Correct lawn now or whatever. Yes, yeah, so this would be, this would be a parking lot up here, new, this is not...
So on the current lawn, the building goes?
Yes, yes. I believe one of the other, before we get into the review, one of the items was green cards.
Yes.
And I emailed them over, I have a copy of them to you.
Okay, what about the tear sheets from the paper?
Oh, he didn't get that?
I only could find one. I went to the telegram itself and I found one that said, I believe it was posted on the 13th. It was posted on June 13th, but it should have been another date as well, it was only this one.
Okay.
I wanted to ask you, so I'm not sure.
I'll have to check...
Yeah, it has to be posted two...
Yeah.
A week apart.
What happens if they don't happen to have one?
And the telegram also can't confirm?
If they have, if they have paper...
That's only when I found the telegram, I mean, they may not, maybe for some reason it's not coming up, that's why I wanted to find, they had asked this one, I have the one that says it was posted in the telegram on June 13th. We had it on the 27th, so I forgot one more.
Right, so either you can have a newspaper with it in there and you say, show that it was there, or the tear sheet, either one works.
Yeah, but I can only find one, so it should have been one for the 20th, June 20th.
The June 20th?
Yeah, I mean, it could have been somewhere else and I just didn't pull it up, but...
Right, then that would mean we'd have to repost the public hearing.
You looked online for that?
I did, but like I said, this is the only one that I did find, which is correct, which is correct, I posted, so...
Hopefully they have something, it's usually the applicant submits, that's why it's worded in our bylaws. When I wrote the bylaws or rewrote the bylaws, we had made a mistake and had to redo a public hearing because we didn't post it correctly, so what I did was I changed the zoning to make it the responsibility of the applicant. So if it goes bad, it's on them. Not that it's good when it goes bad either way, it takes up everybody's time, but it's still, it can happen and it does unfortunately.
I don't think I have that with me.
You can submit that later, that's...
But as far as you know, I ran it twice.
As far as I know, yes, yeah. So we received the review letter and as you saw, we did a response to that. Unfortunately, we didn't have a chance to update the plans as of yet. Many of the items, either the information is there or we agree that yes, you know, we can make some updates. I can go through each item if you'd like or skip through the ones that basically our acknowledgement is, yes, we'll do that to save you some time.
Yeah, most of these are pretty quick.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I guess I can just go through each one real quick if you'd like.
Okay.
No, usually to keep time going, we just add the remaining that you can't address or you have, you need a planning board interpretation or just some question.
Sure. So first page, 3.6 D.1 M. Location, flow, volume, and timing patterns for existing proposed traffic shall be provided. So our response was that the traffic patterns are going to be identical to the traffic patterns in the approved, original approved site plan. Inugi has been operating the site for over 10 years without any issues. If applicable, the applicant would like to formally request a waiver to this section of the Westport-Loston zoning bylaw, so...
Sounds reasonable.
But to get around, you want to do the waiver?
We just need to, are there other waivers that you requested?
Yeah.
So that's the only waiver so far, okay.
We can skip to the stormwater management comments on page two. The applicant should review the attached letter addressed to the Westport-Loston planning board from VHB dated July 30, 2003, regarding outstanding issues for the Worcester Forest Center. And confirm that all applicable requirements have been met. So our response was the proposed stormwater management plan meets the previous design intent and is consistent with the stormwater requirements for future developments as stated in the above referenced letter. So we have, going through that letter, it seemed like the only things that, correct me if I'm wrong, that we had to look at was, it talked about adding water quality on your own property and we've done that. We have water quality units, as we mentioned last time, collecting this drainage. And this, the roof trunks is clean anyways, but so we had no water quality issues there, so it's, the way we read that letter...
Sorry?
No problem. The way we read the letter, it seemed like the things that would be applicable to our project, we met unless there's something that we were, we were missing. So we can not have this, is there something specific that we're missing, but it seems as though we fulfilled any issues in that letter and that was July... The things that seem to be pertinent were... If your, if future development proposes to discharge runoff from drainage areas to locations other than originally approved, the board may wish to require additional review. And when not, we're staying consistent, as we kind of discussed before. Stubbs were left for drainage here and here, we're tying into those. And existing drainage goes out to the back here, we're tying into that, so the drainage patterns remain consistent from what was previously approved. A comment in the letter was, all future sites... Need to have its individual operation maintenance plan, we had submitted one of those. You need to have your own construction erosion and sedimentation control plan, we have one of those. So again, it seemed like we fulfilled all of those criteria the way we saw it. Did you have like a water, oral water separator device on that new parking lot? Yeah. Right here, so with a catch basin, catch basin, catch basin, catch basin, catch basin, all goes through a water quality unit here. And then it ties out to the drainage system, so we're making sure that we have additional treatment from our own site for the new stuff.
Brianna, do you have any comments about those responses?
I haven't had a huge chance to look through it, but I know water quality was one of the things that was outstanding, that was from that letter.
What's the...
Demonstrating that water quality that's existed on site and how the additional current quality...
That was the 2003 letter?
Uh, yes, the 2003 letter was what, was the one that said water quality was outstanding, an outstanding issue.
What's that?
It's an old letter.
It's an old letter, yeah.
If you have VHB's letter, all of that's attached, if you want, I can...
Yeah, we didn't copy that. He's got the original, we got copies and didn't want to go through the...
So if you want to think about it, page 2 or 3.
Did you? What were the concerns in 2003?
Water quality, I think that's what changed in DEP's stormwater standards, you got water quality and no new discharges, no illicit discharges. Did you do an evaluation, like a stormwater report through the DEP that's...
Yes, that's one of the comments in here, that's to submit that, so we're gonna do that.
Okay, alright.
And you're right on the money, another comment that they brought up was that statement, that certification statement saying there are no illicit discharges and there aren't to the stormwater system, so that's, we'll be submitting that as well.
And that's not one that's questionable, you'll...
No, yep, so it's just one of those, yep, yep, we got that. Number two on that page, under the original master plan, stormwater runoff discharged to basin one and three. Majority of the site formerly known as subcatchment two discharged to basin three via closed pipe system. The remaining portion of the site formerly subcatchment five discharged to basin one via intermittent stream. When the site was designed and permitted in 2005, areas to basin one and three were modified. Ultimately, the area of impervious to the 2005 proposed conditions was less than the tributary area of the master plan. And then they provided the summary of that, and so that was in regards to the plan that was approved in 2005. So this plan had a reduction in impervious surface from the original design, so, and that was a breakdown there. And then they go on to talk about that. Our design, look, the 10, 210, 2500 year storm using TP-40 rainfall data. We identified three discharge points, which were the two stubs that were left for the project here and here and the system out in the back. So we just get to the gist of it there. Applicant should demonstrate that the existing closed pipe drainage system and existing detention basins have been sized adequately to handle the current rainfall intensities as represented by the current rainfall intensity rates of NOAA A-Atlas 14. The applicant shall discuss this issue with the planning board if they do not wish to demonstrate the system is adequate given the current rainfall intensity rates. So that's why we're talking about that. So as Brian put here in his response, office's design intent was to stay consistent with the previous approved site design and stormwater system. Pre-development condition utilized and analysis was modeled from the originally approved site plan. However, in this office's analysis, the current rainfall intensity we utilize in both the pre and post development conditions. This office is confident that we have provided analysis that shows the proposed improvements are in conjunction with design intent and that no negative impacts will occur. So we felt as though the rainfall that we use comparing with the precondition that was used in 2005, plus we also have another reduction in impervious surface from that 2005 of 13,000 square feet. So we feel as though it's, our design is adequate and didn't feel the need to now analyze the entire project. Not our project, but, you know, you can see it here, but the entire Century Drive development and analyzing all of the basins that are there and all the existing pipe networks that seem kind of beyond the scope of what we're doing here, so...
You know, I think their point was that you used numbers that were 60 years old and there's these new numbers now. And will your pipes be able to handle these new numbers is really the concern.
Right, the way I read it is, existing detention basins and pipe network, we have no basins on our site, so you're asking us to evaluate the entire development.
Oh, okay, so it's...
And that seems much more above and beyond the scope of our project here. I think analyzing our own pipe network, we're fine. We're looking at some of the rates, the only rate that really seemed to increase on the new NOAA A-Atlas 14 is the 100-year storm. Went up a little bit, but the rates we had used for 210 and 25 are consistent. So, and usually 25-year storm is what we evaluate pipe networks on anyways, and so we didn't feel as though we needed to do much further than that, but...
Yeah, well, and again, this is also a follow-up, it's a phased project, so it's the same thing we did with Briarwood.
Right.
The idea of getting the water quality aspect, so that kind of makes sense with us, with me anyway, I don't...
Yeah, I agree. We don't want to upset the total, sorry, too much and say...
Well, I mean, if it were, if it was something we were really worried about, we'd then have to go into the town's right of ways in these detention basins and the town would probably be somewhat responsible for increasing the size of those basins. It's like you have to provide a roadway with traffic, since we provided the roadway and in subdivision system, we would have to provide or upgrade or allow them possibly to upgrade our detention basins and it probably get to be more of a mess than what it's worth for the incremental increase. So what's the next one?
The next one is number three right after that one. Proposed expansion does not include infiltration BMPs. The applicant shall demonstrate compliance with DEP's stormwater management relation standard three recharge. The current proposed project is consistent with previously approved site plans and in fact, the current proposal is approximately 13,000 square feet less impervious area than the approved plan. With the reduction in impervious surface, the current plan is an improvement over the previous plan in regards to stormwater recharge. So, so yes, we didn't provide any more recharges than what the previous, this 2005 plan had or the previous developments had. We have a reduction in impervious surface, so we'd actually have more recharge going back to the ground than what the approved plan in 2005 had.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, because of...
Standards came in 1997.
95, 97, 95, okay, so those were in place.
Policy in 97 and then they continued to evolve into the standards we have today.
What do you think? What was in 2008? Right, but did that change the infiltration? Do you know by how much? So if I remember right, this site's not a, it was a, what was the phrase they used when we did the subdivision, but it was in disrepair, it was a...
Tall ledge?
Yeah, it was, because it was very rocky and ledgy. I don't know that there would be a really big infiltration component, probably the...
The other issue, that previous design we originally submitted, we had a lot of extensive stormwater, most of it was detention because there's a lot of rock. We weren't going to get much infiltration on the site. And then the stormwater management standards do allow, they have a statement in there that if you have, you know, CND soils or soils that really aren't conducive for infiltration, you meet that to the practical, practical... Again, we feel as though we're, we're being the spirit of that based on the previous approval, another reduction in impervious surface from the original plan. So we felt as though we satisfied that.
What's, Brianna, do you have any thoughts on this one?
I think this kind of is similar to what we dealt with with the Briarwood as well, is would be ample ratio. I think we would like to see maximum sound fracture on site, but as I think we went through the Briarwood, it's the same idea.
A lot of rock, same area.
Rock, it was also an expansion, it was also an addition to previously approved.
Okay.
So I think we'll, we will be all too informed on how they want.
I mean, Briarwood's only whatever mile or so next door.
Couple hundred yards, yeah, that's true.
Where they were.
Yes.
And it was the same problem, they had no infiltration.
So I think...
I'm not sure if that, was that like another, like a modification of a previous site plan?
Yeah, there's another phased, phased construction.
What I guess is another benefit to this next phase is we do have a reduction in impervious surface from previously, so it gets you...
From the previous design, but not from the previous building, from the previous building.
So the original, I shouldn't say original, the last approval for 2005 had 13,000 more square feet of impervious than we're submitting today. So that reduction in impervious adds open space, allows some more infiltration than what was approved.
Does all that roof drain go out the back of the new building?
Not all of it, some of it comes out the front, front and back.
Do you have any intent to put the next, the other building on or is this what the best you're gonna do?
From what I understand, this is, this is it.
Business moves to Germany, I don't know.
This is your local manufacturing, right? Or a retail factory?
But the main office, the main company is in Germany. But they had intentions of putting a third building up, but as President spoke for the last meeting, he said that would be 15 to 20 years down the road, so...
That might be...
So many terms expires, so...
Nice to hear, Lee. It may be worth noting that if you come in at that time, it might be good to be aware of the drainage and the infiltration requirements on that, just if it ever happens. Because usually it's, it's not a problem if you know going into it, but now you're, you've got all the plans done and everything's kind of moving down the road, but...
I don't think they ever will, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
We know the current situation in the, that whole developments, basins, are they in good shape, are they doing what they're supposed to do, are they overflowing?
One was VHB's review, we did that...
Of the, I mean, of the physical site?
Yeah, what was that letter, 2003, three?
No, I mean, I'm...
We looked at it back then and I think that was the only time, I'm not sure that it's more than a time ago.
Has there been like repeated complaints of like...
There's never been a complaint that I've heard of.
Site is like slow.
Yeah, no, I guess my, not my concern, but what I'm bringing up is we just let them build a building just on the other side of the basin, that the Girl Scouts are going to be right there. So if this is, if there's a problem right now and that basin's been overflowing, maybe we're putting them in harm's way if the system isn't working like it's supposed to.
I assume the Girl Scouts looked at the drainage and it should be...
They looked at the drainage on their site, but they definitely didn't look at the drainage for the rest of the place going into that retention basin and then spilling over into their parking lot if...
Well, the thing is the pipes, they're tying into existing pipes, so there's so much that can get in those pipes.
Yeah.
So that downstream, it's designed for that size flow or that size...
Yeah.
Pipe flow. So I think, it seems like it'll be alright, but you never know.
I haven't heard of anybody saying that it's flooding out over there.
Well, there's also trees that may need maintenance, as with every detention basin probably in the central mass that I know of, they need to get, they were designed as grass areas and now they've got...
Forested.
Trees and trees, I mean, look at I-190, we just did a project to get rid of all the trees in there and we had trees this big in the access road. So it happens and it may need attention, but I'm not sure anything's that priority.
I'm sure Amugi will jump right up and go down there, use their new cutting tools and take down all the trees.
Alright. Any other items that are problematic?
Nothing on the next page, page four seems, we'll just address all of that. And then page five...
Item four?
Item four. Based on aerial images, appears to be an existing sidewalk on the westbound side of Century Drive. Applicant should provide an accessible route from the front door to the existing sidewalk. The crosswalk should also be installed across Century Drive with a new accessible curb ramp installed to replace the existing curb opening on the opposite side of the street. Accessible route should also be provided between the building entrance and the new proposed parking lot. So the original approved site plans did not call for any of these items. However, the board feels that the sidewalk is necessary, it will be added to the revised site plan. So we weren't changing anything in this front area. On this plan from 2005, a sidewalk was proposed up and around the corner here and then that's where it had ended. And that's exactly how it got constructed, the existing sidewalk right here and it ends at that location there. So we're going to stay inconsistent with the 2005 approval. If I understand what the comment is, it's asking to have the sidewalk continued up along here and then provide a connection over and tie into the sidewalk there, if I get that comment correctly. So if that's, that's something the board would like us to do, then we'll add that to the revised plan. So again, there's an existing sidewalk here built exactly as shown on the 2005 plan. The comment is to provide a connection from the front door to that sidewalk.
It sounds like it also says to cross Century Drive to a sidewalk on the other side of the street.
So then add a crosswalk to get across safely to the sidewalk here and then put in a new curb cut, right, put a new curb cut on the other side of the street.
So there's a sidewalk on the other, on the other side of Century Drive?
Over here, yeah.
Not on your side?
Correct. Yeah, so basically it's to bridge this gap from this point to that point.
The sidewalk really doesn't go anywhere, does it?
On Century Drive?
No, the one you, the one on your property.
So that's, that's why the comment was made, to have a crosswalk here, so that person will now go from this point across the street to get to the network of sidewalks, so...
And down the street to get the crosswalk. Exactly.
So if, yep, so if the board feels that they'd like to see that, then... So if, yep, so if the board feels that they'd like to see that, then that's what we'll do.
Seems to make sense. I mean, how much pedestrian access is there between sites on Century Drive?
None.
It would be mostly, again, it would be mostly people going off to walk around lunchtime or...
Sure, oh sure, yeah.
They don't exercise and get out and see the sun? What?
I actually took pictures yesterday at three thirty, up to four or four, it wasn't a crowded scene.
Well, okay.
But the lungs, no adjustments either.
Do they shovel the sidewalk in the win, do they shovel the sidewalk in the winter?
Uh, that section of sidewalk, I don't know.
Because that would be in...
I didn't see any, nobody there.
Um, I'm trying to pick up the usage of the sidewalk, if it's not used at all, then we'll have to pursue it. I got in trouble for sidewalk talk last time, so I'll stay. That was one, there's another part of that comment too, I don't want to lose sight of. The accessible route should also be provided between the building entrance and the new proposed parking lot. So that's also saying we need to be able to get from here to there. And that's where, I don't see us doing that, you know, we have...
The parking lot, folks who park in the parking lot would enter where?
They would come down a walkway here and stairs and go into the building here. This is gonna be more employees, um, than visitors that are...
So visitors would park in the front of the existing building?
Yeah.
And then that glassed in front, that sort of looked like it was sort of showplace kind of sort of office situation. The new building, the front of it's kind of, you know, snazzy.
Right, right.
It would seem like customers would want to go in there too, you know?
Well, it's, it's not gonna be a customer entrance really. You know, so this, this isn't an accessible parking lot. It's stairs up and down, stairs up and down. We've quite a significant grade change there, so this is where our accessible parking is, so this is where the accessible entrance is being maintained.
Okay.
So we can come back to that if you'd like.
Were those about accessibility or is it just by, just visitors parking? What was the number on that?
Number four, top of the page.
So I wasn't sure it was the ADA aspect, I think it was just getting people from the parking lot into the building.
And we have that, we have walkway and stairs.
To that building.
Uh, into the, and then we have two doors here.
So wouldn't be any reason why people who park in that lot, mostly employees, I assume,
Right.
would want to go park and enter that building.
Right.
But even if they did park in it and there was a customer, they would just have a sidewalk to walk down to the front instead of walking in the road, I mean, or the driveway.
I mean, it's not that much.
Do you, I mean, is there a sign proposed as you drive in, customer parking or whatever, client parking? I don't know how you say it, but just have them drive to the right.
That's not showing, but that's something we could...
That's one way to at least, you get all your customers, how many customers do you get a day that come to the building? A week?
They don't get any really.
It's not...
Once in a while, a client will come in, but...
Right, it's not a kind of business we do.
Yeah, very, very little public.
No counter sales.
Not gonna go shopping at a, at a Muji.
You don't, no? So I mean, I guess my thought is, is that that's the reason you don't really need a lot of sidewalks or a lot of other amenities.
At least, you know, they should have a visitor parking lot, visitor parking.
Yeah, a sign, yeah.
A sign, yeah, because it almost sounds like they're asking for two sidewalks, one next to the building and one, because nobody's gonna come in the parking lot and cross over there and then cross over again.
Yeah, so if we wanted to, to get a route up here, you'd use the same path, you know, come out, cross and then cross again.
Seems, it seems a little convoluted to...
Right, to get to the parking lot.
To get, to do that.
Right.
And you have a handicapped parking, right?
Yep, right, in the front.
Two, three?
That was a reduction in response for the van.
Yep, so there's actually two van spots. So that's, I always hear the, that's good. So we do show two vans, basically, we just didn't label it, so on the revisions, we'll label that. So these two spaces, you can see they're a little bit wider than this hatch area here. The parking lot, nice that we could provide two van spaces, only one, but it works out that we'll have two.
On the side and the back, that's for the employee parking?
Over here.
No, 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 here.
Back here, yeah.
Yeah, that's all employee, right?
Yeah, yeah, so really, it's gonna be, visitors are gonna come right here.
Yeah, at this time, you know, they do, employees do park here, right, in the front of the building.
Uh, they probably park in the back, inside, in here, yeah. Again, there's not a lot of need for parking for people coming in off the, the street, you know, so you have, probably have some of the office employees may park up close and the people in the warehouse and manufacturing.
Here's one, if a handicapped employee was working in that building, how would they get, do they get through the building?
Yeah, they'd park right there.
Or they go in the main entrance and then go around the corner?
Okay.
Good question, Mark.
It's a big question. Yeah, so it makes sense regardless of the discussion of sidewalk, to have a sign, like a, like visitor sign, kind of visitor parking signs. And it doesn't sound like there's a lot of people going, walking from here next door. They walk next door, they get blood, they walk next door, they get cookies and they walk back here to work.
Probably not, yeah.
And they keep walking up, get their materials tested and then come back here. It's a nice place.
They can sit in the one stop shop.
One stop shop, yeah. I can almost see the need for a, a crosswalk and connecting it to the sidewalk across the street, but I can't see the need for a sidewalk from the parking lot to the...
Yeah, on the premises.
To the existing building. That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
So I think that, so that makes sense on this part, but the other part of this one is, is there's no sidewalk from here to here. So that was the other part of the comment is...
It's a dead end, it's a dead end sidewalk.
It's basically getting a person here that wants to walk up, up to the street.
But it's, yeah, but it's a sidewalk that keeps you out of the traffic coming in off the street.
Okay, so it's a, so it's a way to get from A to B.
But...
Having a sidewalk.
But the way, the way you have the new building, there's an entrance right there.
Over here.
No, that's not that one.
No, the entrance is, yeah.
This is the main entrance here.
Yeah, but the entrance for...
Employee, okay.
If you were in a, if you were an employee taking a walk, you'd commit to the street and you'd go into the other entrance.
Right, right. But again, I think the comment is providing a sidewalk from where it ends here to bridge this gap, continuous network from the entrance to the roadway.
How much distance is that without a sidewalk?
It's about the width of the building.
Great question.
No, it's less than that. Now, near the, it's near the parking.
Hundred twenty feet?
Hundred twenty feet?
It's not a whole lot.
So it seems to make sense, I mean, in site plan review, you talk about having pedestrian access clearly marked and clearly indicated, so having a sidewalk go in and go all the way across makes sense.
Added a...
So we'll add a sidewalk from here to here?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
And then add it, so we'll provide that continuous network of sidewalks, sure.
And how does the board feel about a crosswalk then and the connection to the other side and putting in the handicapped, uh, access on the curb?
Yes.
You like that idea?
Yeah, it's, it's gotta go somewhere, yeah.
Sidewalk has to go somewhere.
It should go somewhere, how's that, it should go, we've had that discussion before.
Yeah, I know, I know.
We'll be happy to put that in from curb cut to curb cut across that section, not a problem.
Is the curb cut right across the street?
Yeah.
It is.
Good planning.
Who paints this sidewalk, the crosswalk, the city, the town?
I think when he has his line striped, he would do it as well, as long as it's standard.
We'll line stripe it when we line stripe in the parking lot there.
Just coordinate with the DPW is all. I don't think he'll worry about someone painting the right things on his roadway for free.
Giant Emuji signs right there on the street. Painted Emuji orange, is it orange?
So just to recap for, um, basically adhere to the comment in full with the exception of the last sentence, which is the accessible route to the parking lot. So otherwise fully comply with that comment.
I think that's correct, okay.
Yeah, great.
Yep.
We'll skip to number seven. VHB recommends that all accessible curb ramps have tactile warning panels. It's our understanding that tactile warning panels are not required on private property outside of the public right of way. However, the board feels that they're required, we can add those to the site plans. So it's, in our discussions with, um, the state ADA office, we've gone many times, is it's, it's not a requirement on private property. Any public building or public right of way, you have to have them. Um, so we didn't propose them here, but if it's something the board feels strongly to put on there, we can...
Are they helpful? Is there a reason not to put them on? Are they really expensive or are they painted to shovel?
Just cost, yeah, I mean, it's just, just cost.
And where would those have to be?
So those would be at the curb ramps, the curb cuts, so...
On the, on both sides of the street and then...
When we get off to here, they would have to go in.
Required either way, it's true.
If we're touching these over here, they would have to go in, now you're in the right of way.
Those are required?
In the right of way, yes.
Any, any public, any government building, public building or right of way, they have to go.
So you're questioning the need for them at the end of the sidewalk then?
Yeah, up and for our, up on our part. But, you know, we can, we can add those too, that's...
Might be easier to just add them and make it all the same. You went over the fire department comment, have we gotten comments from the fire department?
Yeah, they said...
They usually send comments, but I don't know.
Last week, last week.
Last week, to look at the minutes, I'm sure.
Okay. The worst... Oh, okay.
Yes, I wasn't aware of any, any comments from the fire department.
Have you spoken to them?
Um, nope, nope, we assumed they would, they'd be part of the, the review process. And if there was a, was a concern, it would have been brought up, but we can, um, we can specifically contact them.
I think if, if I remember, you know, they said yes.
Says approvals were received from the police department, water district and fire department. So they...
Yes.
Okay.
And the fire, fire department also said, you know, they will, you know, if there is something, they will, after the building or something, you know, they will go.
Work on it, okay.
I don't know the exact wording, yes.
But they didn't say we want additional hydrant or steps or anything like that?
And it's, it's sprinkled and...
Yeah.
The water district's saying anything?
They approved it and said...
Okay, with sprinklers, I mean, they, they have enough water, or is that...
And it, it's part of the building process too, there'd be a much more thorough review from the building department, sprinkle of plans and everything like that, but, um, but yeah, the, the, everything is adequate. We're gonna, there's an existing sprinkle line to the building now, we're gonna feed off that into the new building. There's a hydrant that exists out here in the front. But, um, we can follow up with the fire department, um, if it feels necessary, just to make sure on the hydrant occasion.
Yeah, because that actually, the thing that I think they call out is that your hydrants beyond the beginning of the building and usually the fire department likes to have hydrant before they get to the building.
Yeah, yeah, that's, this is, this is all existing, you know, nothing, so it's, but good, good to check with them anyways and...
Right.
They may want to move in.
Double check that.
They could, but...
Oh, so the hydrant is at the, at beginning of the existing building? Yeah.
Yes.
Which puts...
So that's the, it's on the middle.
Right.
Yeah, I think we would have had hydrants, but...
Yeah, so in the original plan from two thousand and five, that was the only hydrant shown.
So it may be okay, so that's good.
So...
It probably is.
But, um, we can, we can double check that. Number eight, applicants should demonstrate that the drywall to the north of the building addition can be decreased from twenty-four to twenty in width and trucks can adequately access the road along the back of the building and loading dock. Vehicle tracking diagram demonstrating the ability of trucks to maneuver in and out of the loading area should be provided for the expected sizes of trucks visiting the site. Our response, the maneuvering area for tractor trailer access is not altered due to proposed building addition. A portion of driveway that is proposed to be altered to twenty feet in width is along a straightaway and no issues are perceived. So to orient you where this is being discussed, so there's an existing driveway here that comes all the way around. None of this is changing except that to fit the building, we're taking away four feet of this straightaway here going from twenty-four to twenty. So the access for the trucks doesn't change. It works out very well now, the trucks come in, back up and pull out, you can see a very wide radius here. And we're actually opening up even a little bit more. So they have no problems now with their truck traffic and we're not changing that situation. If anything, we're pulling the, the radius in a little bit more, you know, make it a little bit easier. And the narrowing of the driveway, it's on the straightaway, we don't expect any issue.
There's no parking there?
Nope.
Okay, and is it one way or is it just...
No, it would be two way, but, but more, the typical traffic pattern is they come in like this.
Okay.
And go out that way, yeah. So we don't see any, any concerns with that, it's been operating that way since the beginning and we're not changing that really.
Would it make sense to make that a one way and reduce it down to even fifteen feet so you get a little more space between the building and the pavement?
Well, the thing we, we always, we try and stay twenty, um, and reason for that is, is my understanding, not too long ago NFPA came out with some newer guidelines on access and it went from a minimum of fifteen or eighteen to a minimum of twenty. So we always try and stay twenty feet to keep the fire departments happy, um, so it's...
And it may just be that from the wording that they had in their comment, it almost sounds like there's some note somewhere that says that the access road is gonna be reduced by four feet and it may not be clear where that stretch of four foot reduction is.
Can, Brianna, can, can comment, but I think it was just pointing out to the board to see that, hey, it was twenty-four feet wide, we're taking four foot, we're going down to twenty, doing their job, kind of bringing that up for discussion so we can talk about it to make sure you guys are okay with that, if I understood that right.
Yeah, we just wanted to, we wanted to know, like, make sure that you guys were aware that you made it smaller and that you still have access.
So it's a great, a great comment for discussion, um, so. Yeah, with property owner, we all felt that it's not gonna impact them at all and should have no issues.
And it's an internal roadway, so it's not a big deal for us.
But there's no parking, but there's nobody trying to maneuver in the, in the space either?
Nope.
You know, which is one of the reasons for... And they're, and they're expanding on the back, so.
So yes, it's a...
So how, deliveries, truck deliveries are not going to the new building, they're going into the old building and I...
This is the building.
Yeah, that's the way the loading dock is.
And they have their route because they have to go the way, the way the loading dock's designed at an angle.
That's what it looks like, yeah.
And you never have more than, I mean, if there was two trucks, hopefully one would wait on...
If we get one truck every two weeks.
Okay.
Okay.
Because that's one other reason to have a wide aisle, so that people can park and somebody can pass them and then you can...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know, so I think we're all set on that one. And then we were fine on the rest of that page, that was it.
So the last one on page five, you're talking about our parking requirements. They only require fifty-six spaces and you're proposing a hundred and twelve?
Correct.
Are you finding that you need that many spaces or what, why propose that many?
Yeah, I think it's, um, that, I think they're also gonna use this area too for other parts of their operation as a test equipment, right? Remember that correctly?
I'm not really quite sure why, but, uh, I think that's what they want.
It just seems, pavement's like the most expensive thing that's out there and...
Yeah.
And it's, it's more than twice the required number, so.
Right.
I wasn't sure whether our rigs are way off, way off base and you need that many for that type of an operation, but...
I, I guarantee you, at their full capacity, you might see five thousand in that in the parking lot. And they're bringing in more equipment, more machinery, you know, maybe up to ten employees to start, we'll see where it goes with that, I don't know.
How many employees now?
I don't know, I don't work for the company, I work for a general company.
But that's one of the things, we can provide that.
Well, no, that's fine, I, you probably had it all written up at the last hearing that I missed.
Excessive number of spaces for a relatively small number of employees, you know, so...
Right, so, but I think, you know, maybe the thought is now is the time, you know, to kind of, this is the last, the last hurrah here.
Well, it's your proposal, it's okay, I just was thinking if you can save some impervious, then we, we do better than infiltrating on the rocks.
How much is that grade change? Like from the, from the new parking lot down to the existing roadway?
Save some blasting in the back of that lot.
Like fourteen, sixteen feet.
So you couldn't, I was just thinking, you know, why you wouldn't connect that road going across into the parking lot?
Up in here, yeah.
You know?
That was the difficulty is getting, getting up there. Um, and also I think it's, as Rock was mentioning, that's also a concern too.
Yeah.
If this was a nice sand gravel pit?
Yeah, just make it level and...
The whole side would be flat. Yeah, but we don't have that luxury. So, um, you know, basically, you know, work our way up in here and then kind of gradually get up to grade.
Right, you can do it in, twice or three times the distance you can go down.
Exactly, yeah.
An elevated walkway would have been nice, the parking over. You hit the glass on the building.
And a monorail.
Instead of the rest of the road in the back, when you get a monorail for that Century Drive?
So that, that covered all the elements of the letter.
Any other comments then from the board or from VHB? So we have one waiver. And was there something outstanding that we have to work on, the first one, the stormwater? Did, did you want a chance to review, VHB?
Yes, we'll, we'll look over it. Yes, we'll, we'll look over all of their plans when we get them and.
Okay, so we should, should you continue to give them a chance to work? When, when did they get the letter, the response, like?
Yesterday.
Yes, right?
Well, we got their letter yesterday, and they got ours today.
Oh, okay.
That's right.
Yeah.
Cut off the press.
Yeah, so we did, we did the best we could to address the items, yeah, for the day.
Nice job, we're gonna give them, turn around in a day.
Because that's why you don't have any plans, so we can, we got all the comments, we approved, it was pretty straightforward, you know, yes, yes, yes.
Do you continue this then for next time?
We're getting new information, so it's a continuance or.
Or we accept it all as the best we can do, and just be done with it. I mean, if we.
You can't.
We'd have to go like on danger of, of a non-review if we're gonna close the meeting.
Right. I don't see any issues that are here, so it should be, the trouble is, I'm looking for the developers, is the idea that it's, we don't meet again for another month.
Right.
So our next meeting is when?
August.
August eighth.
August eighth.
We could draft, I mean, what we usually do is we approve it, and then we draft an approval. Wanna do this spiel, you've heard it before, right?
Remind me how it goes.
No, but we usually do the approvals, and then we draft an approval letter, and that comes at the next meeting, it gets signed, and everything gets the, the period started. What we could do is we could let this stay open, assuming that everything's gonna go well, we can, we would draft an approval letter, send that out to everybody for review, and then at the same meeting that we closed the public hearing. During the regular meeting, we would vote on the waivers and vote on the approval letter that's already been drafted, and we sign off on it then. So either way, you're gonna end up with the approval letter on, assuming everything is good, on August eighth.
Right, so even if you would decide to do a conditional approval tonight, we're not gonna get that approval until the next meeting anyways.
And it makes it a little easier so that we're not closing the public hearing and then having to reopen it, which is a mess.
Yeah, I think it's.
Were you planning construction anytime August eleventh?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just hoping to break around right around the second week of August.
Yeah.
And you could, I guess, I don't know, there's, there's not much.
We would get the letter out.
The beginning of construction.
But our August eighth letter, it would have to go to clerk, and then it would get off to you, so you could possibly get that still going, but you would be doing the work at risk. Not a lot of risk, cause, actually, are there any butters here that are upset about this? I didn't think so. So I don't think there's any much risk at all, but it still does have a twenty-day appeal period. And either way, it's gonna start on August eighth at the soonest, but.
Really, was that the biggest risk is the drainage calculations, in which case, I mean, they could start doing what they're doing, I mean, they, I don't know what you change.
Well, no, I think they're gonna, they're gonna have a, VHB is gonna have a review of their comments by the eighth, and so that if, at our continued public hearing.
But I was talking, starting construction at risk, I don't think there's that much risk except.
Oh, yeah, there shouldn't be any risk.
I can't get a building permit until you sign off.
Right, right.
Right.
So it's.
But again, so it's, if we can, so it sounded like that's probably the way to go, um, continue it to the next hearing, and then hopefully wrap everything up.
Yep.
At, at, at.
And everything should be ready, and is everybody gonna be here? No one's, no one's taking more vacations, are they?
You have no one taking vacation?
We're sitting there, we're, you're Galved.
I know, that's right, that's right.
Uh, but if I could just reiterate then, on the items that were for board discussions, all the other ones, it's basically us acknowledging VHB's comment, and we're gonna make additions to the plan, so those ultimately should all go away.
Right.
Um, it was the stormwater man, it was the one that we talked about, the waiver, which it sounded like, um, that would be okay.
Waiver for the, for the traffic pattern?
Traffic flow patterns and things like that.
Should we get an, an idea what the board is thinking about for the waiver, so at the end, we don't not approve the waiver and he has to go away and do a traffic study?
Yes, that's a good, good idea.
Good idea.
So, I mean, I, I would, I would go for the waiver until I'm not doing a traffic study.
As, as would I.
Okay, we need one more, and then we can.
You guys are the only voters, I'm kind of a spectator here, but a very vocal.
What do you think? Waiver on the traffic study?
Study waiver. That sounds like it's, there's traffic.
And that was kind of, kind of included in our zoning bylaws for bigger projects and for, like, if this were a new project.
Right, this is right, right.
So that's why I think it's an easy one. Okay, so the, the waiver sounds good. Board, okay, good. Um, storm manager comments, it was making sure that we were good with the V, uh, VHB letter from two thousand and three, fulfilling the future developments, and we thought we were good there, so. Do not, we'll have to provide any more information.
Is that, is the analysis data appropriate, or do you wanna have them analyzed to the heavier?
On the bigger storms?
Yeah.
No, it's like, uh, Brianna said, it's similar and consistent with what we did with Briarwood. And so Briarwood was the same, they had a prior approved plan, same idea, so.
Which was larger than the, the current plan, so.
And that's, and this one.
So, so again, so if I understood correctly, items one and two under the stormwater management comments, um, the board didn't see any need for additional information.
Well, one in part was looking at the, that letter.
Yeah, the two thousand and three letter.
I'm not sure, that VHB might've seen something that we're not seeing, so I would just wait on theirs. Yeah, so they'll be reviewing it, and we have time in the next month to address that, that I don't see that as being a big issue.
That's item one.
And the input, the planning board has given to VHB is that we're not too worried about infiltration, we just wanna do to the greatest extent practicable as we can do.
Okay, so those, for those items seem hopeful.
So you're referring what to one and two?
And two, yes, Longton. Yep.
And three as well was part of that.
One, two.
Three was the recharge one.
Right.
But again, the, the impression I was getting was the, is the board, um, wasn't overly concerned with those due to the, the nature of the project, it being not a brand-new one, kind of a modification of.
And less than the original plan.
Right, right. And then we got to page five, item four. Um, we're gonna comply with that with statement in its entirety, with the exception of an accessible route to the parking lot. But also, um, we're gonna add a visitor directional sign at the entrance.
This is done in the play parking.
Yeah, so, and, and other signs saying.
Yeah, play parking, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so item four was striking the last sentence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have signage?
No, there's nothing.
No, we're on the building or something? I mean, currently, is it?
Um, it's a huge sign out front.
Yeah, it's a.
Is, is existing, any not changed in it?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
It's right here.
Okay.
And, so we're gonna do that, and then, and number eight on that same page was the, the width of the driveway, um, I understood the board was, was okay with that, so.
It does say warming panels, doesn't it? Instead of warning, that's okay. I'm forgetting it's warning, not warming.
Winter time, so the ice doesn't form.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
On there, yeah. Yeah. So we're in agreement at number eight, it will be the warning?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so eight was the, the reduction in the drywall, board seemed okay with that, and are going to add the morning panels.
Yep.
So forth.
That's it. Sir, yeah.
How big is the existing building now? Twenty-one thousand one hundred square.
And how many parking spots are there now at the existing building?
Fifty, existing, fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And how, and how many of them are in the front of the building?
In the front?
Yeah.
We have twenty-two.
And there's no, and there's not gonna be any in the, in front of the new building, right?
Correct.
Okay, and how many parking spots are gonna be in, in over here on the new, on the next of the?
Over here, fifty-nine, fifteen.
The reason I'm asking is because in two thousand and five, they came before the ZBA to get a variance for, um, section five point two B and two C. Which, and I know you had, I was watching you, you had a, a kind of a strange look on your face about the parking in front of the building, it just, it had to do with, um, um, dimensions of the parking space and the setbacks, okay? They also told the ZBA that the building is gonna be sixty thousand five hundred square feet with a hundred and twenty parking spots. So they're okay, as far as I can see, because if you take what they have and what they're building, it's still gonna be under sixty. And the new parking spot with the new ones and the old one, it's only gonna be a hundred and thirteen. And I know the gentleman behind me said a hundred, something about a hundred and twelve.
It's a hundred and.
So, so it's, so the ZBA, the only, the only thing was, I couldn't find was, is that on the decision that the ZBA made, it said that, um, one of the, the condition was, is that the petition must submit proof to the board of appeals that this variance has been recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, and I cannot find that in our records. So if you could, you know, I mean, you don't have to do it right now, but if you could just, we can just make sure that we get a copy of it so we can keep it in our records. In case the planning board has any questions, or anybody else has any questions about that, we gotta keep all our records, so. That was my only question, is, you know, because they came before the ZBA for sixty thousand five hundred square foot building, you know, that was just gonna be the building, and they didn't build that, and they asked for a hundred and twenty, there was gonna be a hundred and twenty parking spots, and some of them were in the front. And I just wanted to make sure that because of what they're building now, that it's still within that.
Appears to be.
So the variance is still alive on the property, so we're, we can keep going.
So you're looking for the, a recorded copy of the ZBA variance decision?
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are we doing a motion to continue?
Yeah. Okay, motion to continue this public hearing on, on a eighteen-hundred cent street right.
To the, what's the date?
August eighth. Eighth, no, can we put it, uh, seven thirty? Seven thirty?
You got an hour limit? Okay.
So August eighth?
Yeah.
Seven thirty?
Good.
Are you a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Same.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Me. Here is our agenda.
Briarwood.
Nice to see you.
Crash nations.
Oh, you sold it.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
Good to see you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Our next topic is Briarwood. Uh, we're voting on the waiver requests and the decisions for the special permit, uh, site plan approval and stormwater permit.
This one?
Briarwood?
Yes.
Briarwood.
Can you talk to him? Oh.
Chairman, members of the board, we've seen yesterday the revised approval letter, uh, from your planning, planning board, and we reviewed it, and it's acceptable to the applicant in all respects.
Oh, good, okay. So that should have the wording for the waivers that we're gonna discuss next.
Right.
Last, last minute, they were in, making sure that it was, uh, clearly identified as an amendment to the original?
Yes, yeah, my draft was trying to get, I knew I was not gonna be in, so I wasn't sure whether we needed to get a special permit, um, change this, original was a special permit. And Mr. Longdon just looked at it legally, it seems we have to, so that's why they waited till we had all four members here, so that's good. Thank you. So I guess I'll motion to vote on the waivers, as noted, um, in our approval letter dated July eleventh. There are two waivers, uh, mostly the traffic, um, proposed traffic scheme and vehicle trip information, those are the two, I am motion to vote to approve this, these waivers.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
To approve the waiver?
To approve both waivers?
Yes, aye.
Yes, aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Should we all sign our own copy?
Yeah.
No, probably not. Probably not.
You have the original?
Yeah, here's a copy here.
It's all right, so.
Yeah, good, good suggestion, though, approve it.
Oh, just a minute.
Oh, the whole thing, yeah.
Back page, yeah.
I only have waivers on my back page.
Hmm? Flip the page.
Oh, back page, okay.
There's six, there's page six also.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, five, yeah, the waivers are on page five.
So we've done the waivers now, I'll make a motion that we vote on and approve, or vote on, to the certificate of final, certificate of final site plan review approval amended, special permit, and stormwater management.
Second, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Move on.
Start with you. Thank you for your work on that, sir.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clerk.
May I, the clerk?
Yes. Yes, you forgot.
He wrote this follows.
Two.
So I wrote this on the waiver, and then here, wrote this follows for the whole plan.
Eighteen-hundred centry. All right, we get started.
All right. So we're set with that, right?
Yep. We jumped to number two on the old business.
Oh, village center zoning, would you like to do that?
Well, unless, we got a lot of people here for some reason.
No, eight o'clock, we should go to the, uh, the senior senate thing.
What?
It's eight o'clock, we should go to the senior senate thing.
Is that what we're doing? Okay.
I could do that.
You guys, Briarwood's all set, we signed off?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think CM RBC had to.
Yeah, chair, it's up to you what you wanna do, but, um, we are on.
Oh, for seven point five, I thought we were just doing our old stuff.
We're on the budget for this project, so.
Wow.
The longer we're here, the more, less time it is that we can spend working.
Right.
I thought I heard a meter ticking.
And also for the, for the one twenty-seven hardwood.
Steve is not, I hear it, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not sure he's coming, but I think what we, yeah, he's not here yet, so maybe we do the zoning first.
You ought to hear, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, yeah.
So, CM RBC.
You're the chair, yeah.
Yeah, let's do the old center zoning.
It's not that bad off of the table. Seven forty-five, we're.
Not too bad. On our planning board time.
Right. So we, we're only paying since seven forty-five, right?
Mark. Good evening.
Aye.
Can we approach the board chair?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Well, he's the chair.
Yeah, he's the chair now, I got. He's sitting in a chair, but he's not chair.
It's not all.
This is comfortable.
Yeah, it's not big shoes. Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So. So, um, did you have new information for us, or a status update, or?
Um, I just wanna touch base real quickly, um, from what I understand, you had Trish settles here, um, in May, and she met with you, and at that point, you decided that you needed more time to look over the material before making any comments or decisions.
Yeah.
So, I apologize for not being here, I had a brand-new baby girl on May second.
Congratulations.
She's gorgeous, she's with dad tonight, and, um, I'm still on maternity leave, but.
How's that working out?
Well, we're gonna find out, it's the first time. My phone hasn't been ringing, so.
That's nice.
I'm sure he's doing a great job. Um, so I have Eli Goldman here also, who's also working on this with me. And, um, I, from what I understand, um, I, um, the board has been meeting, working with C M R P C for two years on this. You, you met, um, January of two thousand sixteen, May of two thousand sixteen, June of two thousand sixteen, July of two thousand seventeen, and November of two thousand seventeen on this project.
Yeah, it's been.
Wait, wait, the third one?
Yeah, and so I inherited this project from, um, you were working with, um, Jeff Bag.
Jeff, he was one of them, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Who was the one who did the tour? He was good.
Chris, I think.
Maybe it was Chris Ryan, yes.
Yeah, I liked that, he was huge.
Yes.
One of them on.
So Chris Ryan's moved on to higher education, and Jeff Bag took a job in his hometown, so.
You can't beat that.
Okay.
And, um, so now I'm here, and Eli's here, and, um, we've reviewed the history of the project. Um, I wrote this letter, I, I think you got it from Trish, but just to refresh our memories, um, what I did was I looked at the history of the project, the comments that had been made previously, and I don't know if anybody in the public wants, does anybody, I made extra copies, if anyone wants to see. Okay, so what I did was look through your master plan, and I noted that there were.
Can I, one second? Nope. Time is money.
Time is money?
Maybe.
Yeah, so you can go to.
We're all set.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Wait, did they do, have you done a review or a visit to?
One twenty-seven. One twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven?
One twenty-seven. Um, I'd have to double-check with, I know Larry, I think, was supposed to be on that, I haven't talked to Larry this past week, Larry came out. Um, but I can check it with Larry, see if he's been up there.
I mean, that's the only thing.
That was the only thing we had.
Yeah.
I'll let you guys know.
All right, thank you, sorry about that. Eli, if you, that's what I have for a file, if there's something new in there, we can make a copy of it for you, but just take a look through while we're chatting, and she's giving us a history that she knows, that you already know, probably.
Sorry to interrupt.
Sorry to interrupt, where do you go?
We just want to check with her.
Wait, don't wait on him? Okay, so.
Keep going.
Um, essentially, there's, um, D L T A funds that match an E E A grant, so there's money to help Wes Boilston continue this project, and, um, I took a look at the master plan to see what goals from the master plan were in sync with doing, um, village center bylaws, and I detailed those in the memo. Um, basically, um, there's an area for the public, there's an area in town, um, the villages of Oakdale, Pinecroft, and Town Center um, are areas of interest to include in this district, and then essentially what a village center district is, is it creating a town center that's walkable, that has mixed uses, that has apartments on the upstairs, and business on the downstairs, complete streets, and, um, parking in the back of the buildings, not in the front, there's, and can and can with this, you could pair design guidelines, that's another step, if you wanna go that far. Um, but right now, we're just looking at the ordinance, and I, what I noticed was, um, looking back through the history of this, is there were comments made on what you wanted, and I kind of made some bullet points detailing some of the main things that Wes Boilston was looking for, and those are all listed. Did, did everyone get this letter previously, or is, this is not new news?
Right.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, so I, I wanna get something, I wanna stick throw spaghetti at a wall and see what sticks. I wanna get something to draft, something that you can look at, that follows in line with the master plan, follows in line with the previous comments that were made, and, and get something that we can work with, and if you hate it, we can revamp it. If you like parts of it, we can, we can keep it, if you wanna tweak it, we can tweak it. Um, I don't know where you are, um, today with the, the composition of the board and the public, and what you would like to see, but we would like to present something to you to get started on this. So I have a draft ordinance, and I'm, I'm gonna say it's, it's a first stab, so it's not perfect, there are typos in it. We're just getting something started, um, and I, has everyone had time to look at this?
This was the one that you sent out?
Um, back in April.
Couple months ago?
Yeah, and I think it's the one that, when Trish came, you looked at it, but you said you needed more time to digest it, and you had not, um.
Yes.
Gone any further, so I don't know, I, I don't know if you wanna start by looking at the purpose, and making sure the purpose is in line with what you want, because if the purpose isn't in line with what you want, then the whole ordinance that follows is not gonna, um, is not gonna be, um, what you want. And I'll let you know that there's six other, there's five other towns in western, in, um, the central Massachusetts region that are also doing this, so this is a trend, a lot of towns, a lot of towns want their village center, um, and they're, they're working towards it.
I think, uh, one I would be adding to this, it's sort of the opposite of a mix of new land uses, uh, probably a restriction of things that we don't want, would also be.
Yeah, but have, have you.
Probably mentioned later on also.
Have you looked at, it says, um, prohibited uses?
Yep. But that, I mean, that would be one of the main goals also, I think. But yeah, I know it was, was mentioned.
Or like to discourage certain things?
Yeah.
Well, you may wanna.
Just to clear, we find in the, the purpose that there's some things that.
And in the purpose, maybe just allow for a mix of, forget new, a mix of land uses that are appropriate to both needs of the community.
So cross out new?
Yeah, with that.
Yeah, that was, that's fair.
That's what I had in my, 'cause we get the old version that has the, the commentary of it.
So what would you like to discourage?
McDonald's kind of fast food restaurants in our village district?
Um, okay, you might get into legal trouble if you say discourage McDonald's.
That's why I said fast food.
Discourage, fast food.
As an example, yeah.
Because what we're trying to do is have it more of a quiet residential aspect, um, but businesses that can fit into that, um.
Right, no.
It's not that it doesn't have to be a big money business, I mean, it may be that a bank would be appropriate to be there, but where there's a lot of traffic, a lot of open twenty-four hours a day, a.
Okay, so there are provisions in this, um, just if you go through the whole thing.
Yeah.
That, um, discourage big box, um, because it limits the square footage of the, the use. So that's covered later on.
Drive-throughs as well, or?
Drive.
Yeah, I thought it was all.
Yeah, we had a proposal, uh, some time back for an oversized gas station, with many, many lights, and many, many pumps, and music playing, and that was inappropriate for this section of town, so that's the type of thing also.
Yeah, and, and as we get into uses, you can, you can, uh, pick and choose.
Yeah.
What you wanna add, or?
What about the new things part?
The what part?
Recreation marijuana.
I'm sorry?
Recreational marijuana stores.
Oh, well.
This is a perfectly good place, but it's close to school.
Did, um, did your town approve?
We have a moratorium.
Well, we have a moratorium that we are going for the bylaws.
Okay.
So, it's, it's, it should be done by October, maybe, this is not going to be done by October, right?
What was our time for minus, I thought?
It's, um, June of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so we have.
So we're hoping for the spring two thousand nineteen, meaning.
So that's the one thing, you know, we need to think about.
Or the marijuana.
And also, you know, when we write them, uh.
Is that something you guys need help on too, is the marijuana bylaws? Because we're, we're working on that, I did one for the town of Hardwick, um, and we have another staff member that's working on bylaws, um.
We have a subcommittee that's working on it, and maybe we'll bring it to the subcommittee, they need it, right?
Yeah, I missed the last meeting.
Yeah.
But, uh, there were some also, there were some very good, uh, proposals by Grafton.
Chalkton, Chalkton.
Example, yeah.
Examples.
Which town do you want?
Yeah.
Other towns that seem to have very good.
But Grafton, Grafton?
They Grafton's language is, yeah.
Very good wording, wording.
Grafton, not Grafton.
Grafton.
It wasn't Graft, it was Grafton, not Grafton.
I think Grafton was more of a hand.
That's the, that's the first time approved, the.
This was particularly good, we felt it was not overly wordy, it was very specific and clear.
Okay.
And reasonable to us, that, so at the last meeting, I haven't heard results from the last meeting.
No.
The, the only thing that came with the last meeting is that there was, the Board of Health was at our meeting too.
Yes.
And Boston had a sample Board of Health, uh, document, document, what do they call it, like guidelines or something like that, whatever they call their bylaws or guidelines, and that, it's gonna be an interesting twist to sort of share the two, 'cause they, they, they're taking care of like defining what smoking is, and where it's allowed in public spaces and stuff like that, and then we're defining places where the buildings can be for, um.
Location.
Yeah, you know, so it's, it's, it's a balance, but that's what came up at the last meeting, was that.
Okay, I, I don't wanna take us off topic, I just wanted to point out that C M R P C does offer that service, if it's something. Um, myself and Ron Baron.
Well, maybe at that meeting.
At our next, uh.
See, it's of interest, yeah.
To a committee meeting.
Yes.
And there might be funding we can help you find to, to do it.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there, is there?
I don't, I don't wanna take you off the V C D.
Yeah, let's go back to that.
Um, I don't know if you, if you wanna, I mean, I don't know how much time you want allotted to this tonight, because it's a long ordinance, and there's a lot of things that need to be thought over, um.
I guess the, the only thing that really came out to me was you starting off it as, with it as an overlay district, and I thought when we were talking to Trish that we were looking at making it a, an actual district.
Okay, an actual district, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Who's the guy who did the tour?
Chris Ryan?
He did a nice job with one of his graphics showing, one of the, one of the problems we did notice when we did the tour was that our zoning currently doesn't really match the property lines that are around town.
Mm-hmm.
Like business stops halfway through one of the business buildings.
You have multi-赠 parcels.
Yes.
Yep.
And, and I think that that's one of the reasons we wanted to go with a zoning change rather than overlay, was to take advantage of.